I call the meeting to order. This is August 18th. And Sarah is out of town tonight, and so we have the other four council are present. We're meeting electronically tonight, and Mike Heverkamp is our temporary city clerk tonight. And I see Steve Ballard's here, so we'll go ahead and start with approval of minutes for July 14th. Those were circulated. Are there any additions or corrections to July 14? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Public input. Would anyone like to speak from the public? I don't see anybody. Do you, Mike, see anybody that wants to?
Yeah, he had asked, had request to join, and I see we have somebody with a phone number, and I, I'm not sure if that's Pat. Also, that may be Jim Glasgow. He was the only other person who'd asked to join tonight.
Okay.
And Kip Sheldon is here, too.
Oh, right. And Kip's gonna speak when I talk about the cleanup. So, yeah, I see Kip's here now. Okay, so we'll go on to the consideration of Resolution 2023 authorizing engagement of Black Squirrel Tree Service to assist the city in the removal of trees and debris from the storm. So just to review a very little bit here, that Darrell Tucker was our police officer on the ground, and he was excellent, as Troy wrote in his report. He immediately was assessing the streets. He contacted me. I said, I'm gonna get ahold of Russ Boyer. Russ was available. They went out immediately and started, they probably had, I'm guessing, six streets that were totally blocked, and they went out and started clearing it, and also citizens, residents helped. And they were able to clear most everything except a couple of streets all the way. They had them all open so that cars could go through, but not all of them. And then I was immediately texting Mid-American, our University Heights Mid-American rep, and getting some calls from Darrell about important cases that were happening, you know, like whether they were dangling wires or people needing, who are on oxygen, and Mid-American went out and did those things, triaged those things right away. And then we started putting out contacts for tree services. And Kip Sheldon, who's on the tree board and here tonight, I asked him to be here tonight. He was able to talk to Black Squirrel. He had worked with Black Squirrel when they did the clearing over at Swisher, and Derek got right back to him. And so he called me, and we were able to set up with Derek to do the rest of the cleanup from the streets and any any emergency cleanup that he needed to do with danglers, you know, all those difficult things. And Kip was wonderful, because Kip would go out and check everybody and and see where the prop resident were, where the trees on roofs, so that the critical areas could be taken care of. And Darrell's, uh, not Darrell, but Derek started with that. And hey, do you want to speak about that a little bit, Kip? You're on mute right now, but you're on the tree board, and you were very helpful. Can you unmute yourself? It usually, it's in the bottom left corner. I don't know, maybe you have to unmute him, Mike. I don't, you know what I mean? Because he's a call-in. Seems like Sarah unmutes him. But I, I asked if he would speak a little bit, but anyway.
Can you hear me?
Okay, we can hear you. Go ahead. Kip, do you want to speak about, yeah, maybe, can you hear us, Kip? He was speaking. Maybe he can't hear us.
We can hear you.
I can hear you, yes. Start speaking. Yes. Kip, can, I, I turned it over to you, Kip, so you can tell a little bit about how you went around and checked things so that you could help the residents who are in critical situations with trees on their roof. Can you hear me? Uh, I don't think that's working very well. But Kip was, in fact, he had a tree on his roof, and he waited until almost the end before he, he, he was getting other people help first. Can you hear me, Kip? Can you speak? Apparently, it's not working.
Does he have his volume turned up?
But
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes. Can you, yeah.
Sure. As you'd mentioned, I canvassed University Heights on my way home. I called Derek, Black Squirrel Urban Forestry. I asked him for assistance. He said he'd be there first thing in the morning Tuesday. And then, you know, I immediately called you and asked if the city wanted assistance in clearing the public access ways. And then I drove around to the homeowners that had trees against their homes and informed them the city is employing, you know, a crane operator that, that we have used before, and they've been fair to us, and they might be able to respond by tomorrow. So Derek arrived at my residence at 0700 that Tuesday. We drove around, pointed out all the critical public access ways, primarily North Sunset Street, as it turns into Grand, the corner of Highland and George and West Cozier. Those three areas were passable by vehicles, but not, you know, like fire trucks. So by Tuesday evening, I was able to report to Louise, you know, that the streets and sidewalks were essentially cleaned. And to the best of my knowledge, most of the homeowners minus the mayor and the stamnesses that had extensive damage in their backyard, they were done by, what, Wednesday or Thursday?
Yes.
So, and I just wanted to add, it was brought to my attention by several homeowners between Mahaskin and Monroe that their feeder poles or mast that the, the power lines feed into the meters were completely bent at 90 degrees. And I informed them that they needed to contact licensed electricians to repair them, or they might have to wait even longer once the power is restored, and that proved to be accurate. So lessons learned for, God forbid this happens again. So Saturday morning, we were, we were, we were graced by five electricians from, by the way, they're from Grand Island, Nebraska. They were reviewing their maps on Monroe, and I gave them the information I had, including the transformers in blue and back of the on-site.
For Mid-American. That was for Mid-American.
Yeah, they were contractors from Grand Island.
Yeah, for Mid-American, not for electrician.
Okay, so anyway, they, by Saturday afternoon, I think most everyone had power. So that's about all I have to report.
Yeah, thank you, Kip. You were a great help and helped the residents, and there's a lot of people that were helping each other and helping clear the streets and helping, helping Russ. How, it was wonderful. And we still have some trees in our backyard that, you know, need to be worked on, but we're, everybody's in pretty good shape, and we'll, we'll get to that. And so Lisa had constantly been talking to me, let's get things on the website. And so it was on the website pretty quickly about the citywide cleanup would happen. I contacted Dave Wilson. He said, treat this like you would a disaster, that you're gonna get recovery money. And so that was put on the website immediately. It's in Lisa's report. And so people need to take the trees to the curb. There's no particular size. You can set it at the curb between the sidewalk and the, but not in the street and not on the sidewalk, the best you can. And Derek said the cleanup will start hopefully tomorrow. He has a roll-off container down on West Cozier, and he'll see how it goes for how long he thinks it'll take. Once he gets in there, he'll know more. And anyway, I had Steve prepare a resolution to have them do the cleanup. And he sent the resolution about 5 o'clock, 5:30. And you want to talk about it a little bit, Steve? I think you did a nice job of summarizing it on your front page.
Steve, you're still muted.
Keep talking. You're on mute.
You're on mute, Steve.
He's looking.
Is that better?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, so as I said, the, the resolution just authorizes payment of the invoice submitted by Black Squirrel to this point in the amount of $2,500. It authorizes the mayor to direct further services from Black Squirrel, the understanding that Black Squirrel will continue to submit invoices. And the way Derek has explained this, he plans to invoice the city on the basis of the number of cubic yards of debris removed. Now regardless of whether it takes three guys and a saw or a skid steer or whatever to actually load it or, you know, come up with that. He's gonna come up with a cubic yard price and just build, build a city on a cubic yard basis. You know, once the city gets that invoice, the city can consider that then at its next council meeting. The only real other thing that, and the resolution says is that the mayor and city staff will, will seek reimbursement from, you know, any available source. I think the president did sign a declaration yesterday. There's state funding, and Louise has kind of had her hand on working with the Johnson County Emergency Management as those details for reimbursement come in. And I guess while I've got the floor, I would say if there's any other expenses Troy or anyone else has that, that we can relate to the storm, I think we should at least consider including those in that reimbursement expense, not just the clean, the cleanup. So that's what the resolution says.
Okay, Troy was supposedly on a staycation at the time, but of course, he got right back to work and helped us, but he, he had limited communication, too, as a lot of us did. But he's been attending the meetings with me, with the emergency management, and he is a great help in obtaining what we need to do and working together. I couldn't do any of this without Troy. Troy's helped, too. And so that resolution is for your consideration. What is it, council? 2023? Let's get a motion on the table in a second, and then if there's questions.
A motion.
Motion by Bobby. Is there a second?
I'll second. Lisa?
Second by Lisa. Okay, discussion. Yes.
Pretty straightforward to me, right?
I'm sorry, what?
I, I just
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, roll call vote.
Cook?
Aye.
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wells? Sullivan absent. Carried.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go down to mayor's report. And the first thing is consideration of Resolution 2019, ratifying and approving my proclamation concerning COVID-19 pandemic prevention. And that was, as I emailed you on like the 29th of July. On the 28th of July, I, I signed the proclamation and had Lisa put it on the website, and then I sent to council and staff the proclamation and after Steve reviewed and Troy reviewed it. And so I need council to approve it if they want. Is there a motion?
I have moved to approve it, Louise.
Okay, motion by Casey. Is there a second?
I'll second, Louise.
Second by Lisa. Okay, discussion. Okay. Roll call vote.
Second. Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. So I'm going to read from the proclamation of COVID-19 Prevention Initiative. Whereas it is critically important to protect residents, visitors, students, and employees in the city of University Heights from the spread of COVID-19 virus, whereas the mayor desires that individuals and businesses in the city comply with recommended practices to reduce the virus spread, including physical distancing and the use of face coverings. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Louise Fromm, mayor of University Heights, and I'd like to add, and the city council, proclaim the COVID-19 Prevention Initiative in University Heights, and strongly encourage that everyone practice physical distancing and wear face coverings when in proximity to other persons, both in public and in private locations. And these practices continue indefinitely until substantial progress in curbing the spread of COVID-19 virus has been declared by public health officials. Okay, very good. Now, I, I want to give a little bit more of my mayor's report. Let's see. I want to announce that Stuart Rosebrook, who was chair of the zoning commission, he sent me a letter of resignation effective August 3rd. He and his family are moving to Arizona. They've moved to Arizona to be closer to family. I replied to him with sincere gratitude for his many years serving on the zoning commission as a member and also a chairperson. So I need to announce, if anyone is interested serving on the zoning commission, is contact me. And you can contact me by email, by phone, by text, stop at my house with a mask on, and I'll visit with you about it. The other thing is, since the July 14th meeting, council member Sarah has said she wants to join the committee to look at the Cozier Brothers. And she also found someone to serve, and I have too. And we were going to meet, and then she had a family emergency, and we've been unable to meet. So hopefully, we could meet here and have a report in September of where we are with that. Are there any questions about that? So then the comprehensive plan, I've talked with Sarah Walts, and we were gonna do something, and then a little storm came, as she put it. And so we're gonna, we're gonna get together and talk on the phone probably, and with the MPO, with them, and we'll have a report for next meeting in September. And I think that's it. And now we have Jim Glasgow is here, and he's on mute. And hey, Jim?
Yep.
Welcome. You want to give a hotel report? How you doing over there?
Good, good. Yeah, we can, I should have about six photos in there that we can bring up, and I can show you where we're at right now.
That's Mike's cue.
Oh, that's, okay.
He has an assistant with him.
Well, while he's, while he's getting that, we're one of the things that we're doing now that was, which is kind of a, kind of new, is we've got the front lot cleared off on the corner. You'll see that in preparation for putting in the driveway entrance, as well as the eight-foot wide sidewalk. So we're gonna be bringing up the sidewalk, which is in the, the 2022 Vision Plan, which is eight feet wide. We're gonna bring that up as far as we can, close to Olive Court. And then that'll be ready to tie in when the rest of the project gets completed. We're probably gonna try and do that in the next two weeks, while we've got All-American concrete lined up and, and it's working out real well, since we don't have any students right now and, and very, very little traffic. So
Oh.
Okay, we can
Is that it? Everybody see those?
I can
Oh, that's not good.
Well, we can, we can, we can start with that one if you want. That, that's one of our vans. That's in, that's one of our employees. His house got a, a tree on top of it as well, as well as our van. So we spent, we spent the day over there cutting down the tree and getting the, getting the truck out. The last week, most of the metro crew has been in the tree removal business, so.
I gotta go to your, I need to go to your other message, Jim, to get the, to get the other pictures, just a second.
Yeah, there's two, there's, there's actually three emails there. I could only get
Okay. That's the same meeting. That's the same one. Just a second.
Okay.
There we go.
Yep.
Wow. It looks closed in.
Yeah, the exterior is, is coming, coming along. The, the railroad, the railroad side is, is pretty well closed in. We've still got some stonework to do on that side. The, the picture that you're looking at right there is actually the south, the south side, which is the garage entrance. So we've got most of the paving done now completely around the building, except heading out towards, towards Melrose. And this is, this is the driveway that goes down in underneath the building, and we got 30, 30, 30 parking spaces under the building. And there'll be a, oh, there'll be kind of a little pod there right in the middle where you'll have a key card to get into the, into the building. Any of the guests that have, have that key card then can go in underneath the building. That, the exterior of that side is going to be a combination of stone and tile and brick. So it's, it's, it's actually quite, this, this actually is about a week old, so there's, there's quite a bit more on there as of today. That picture, okay, so this is the railroad track side. Again, you're looking at the, the restaurant with the windows up, you know, on the, on, on the rooftop, and most of this side is done, except where there, where there's still some yellow styrofoam, there's gonna be a, a combination of a wood, a wood-based material. It's, it's a recycled, well, a combination of plastic and wood. It actually comes from South Korea. It's a, so there, there's gonna be sort of a board-looking material, as well as the, down on the bottom is gonna be stone. And that'll be coming, that'll be coming in the next few weeks.
Wow. So I, I need to try to find the third email then, right, Jim?
Yeah, there's, yeah, they should all been real close to each other.
But it's this one.
Okay. That's a good one there, because that, that now shows you the actual front entrance of the building. And that, that projection out there is the, is the canopy where you actually drive in, and you can drive in underneath that, and that is the main entrance of the building. And that side, we haven't really done, we've done a little bit of brickwork down at the south end, but that, that now will be kind of creeping across towards the front canopy. We do have some of the flooring down in that area, too, which is, it's a stamped concrete material. So it's, it's, that's coming along. That's gonna actually be the last part of the building that we do. So I don't, I think there's still another, yeah, there we go. Well, that's that south end again. There was a total of six pictures, but
Another one here? Hang on. I'm still looking around. Nope, I think.
Okay, well, that's
I think I got them all.
That pretty much covers everything, you know?
Okay.
So that's where we're at today. We're, like I say, our, our main goal here in the next couple of weeks is to get the driveway from Melrose back, back to our, our concrete slab area, and that way we'll, we'll be completely tied in with, with Melrose. And I guess other than that, I don't, that's kind of where we are right now. We're drywalled down to third floor now, and it's, we're starting some painting up on top floor. So we're, we're getting closer to the trim stage when we're gonna be, be open, but it's, it's, it's now getting to the trim stage where we're gonna be able to plan some things, so.
You think the end of the year?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
November, December?
My, my guess is November.
Yay.
Hey, Jim?
Yep.
I was over by the building, and I noticed that the scaffolding remained intact, I mean, despite the storm. And I thought that was very fortunate. Do I have my facts straight? I figured that you have 140 rooms?
Correct.
And that the first year, Louise and I talked about this, I, I think we were talking about 54% occupancy. Is that what you're shooting for?
That would, that would be, I think, a fair assessment right now. Where you, I've, I've got five other hotels across the state that I'm involved in, and we have slowly been tracking up from 10%, you know, during, when the COVID first started. Most of them are running 40% right now. So, so I think in the 50 to 50%, 60% range is probably pretty good for this hotel.
In the rack rate, I estimated 125. That's not, you know, that's an average kind of thing. Is that reasonable, you think, or is that too high, too low?
Yeah, that, that's reasonable. I, I shouldn't even tell you this, but at our Corvoo Hotel right now for this month, we're gonna run 80%.
That's because of the COVID, or the damage in Cedar Rapids or here?
Yeah, right. And that hotel, we were tracking, well, I thought we were gonna do 50% this, this month anyway, just because we've slowly been climbing, and that hotel is actually doing better than some of the other hotels across Iowa. So I, I think it's, it's a combination of a good management team and, and just the fact that we're in this area. The, this particular hotel, I still think it's gonna do better than anything else because of the hospital and, and, and the location. I mean, even, even throwing out the sports and everything else that's gone, it, we still should, we still should do pretty well. And I think if we are in that, if you use 50% as, as a, a range, you know, 50, 55%, yeah, I, I don't see why we wouldn't do that, and I think we'll do a lot better than that. But I'd rather have you guys be conservative, and, you know, that way we're protected a little bit. But everybody's still really optimistic, and, and all, all the people, the management team are pretty well-tested, and they've been doing a great job at Corvoo. And so I, I think that'll transfer over to this hotel, and, and we've got a better location, so.
Well, great. I, I want to remind Louise that if the occupancy is closer to 74%, I owe her an expensive cup of coffee, and if it's closer to 64%,
That was pre-COVID, I mean
Oh, come on, Louise, no backing up.
Well
You know, whatever, I'll, I'll buy you coffee. I mean, I don't drink coffee.
Matter of fact, you already have, as I think about it.
Well, it just, with the caveat, I'm definitely way on the conservative side, and there's a lot of people on our team think we're gonna blow, blow that, blow way past 50%.
Oh, good. I hope you do, Jim.
I hope we do, too, so.
I think it was in February, Casey and I had a bet going on, and then, you know, everything went.
Yeah. Well, the timing, the timing really is probably pretty good for, for when we're gonna open, because I think by the time the election is over and, and they've got maybe a vaccine or a cure or something, then, then I, I think things will really start coming back and, and picking up. So I'm, I'm still really optimistic.
Let me ask you, Jim, what's your understanding of the hotel motel tax, the 7% of, you know, whatever you do? And I was And I was wondering, what's your understanding of how those proceeds have, should be spent according to the hotel motel?
Well, I'd probably ask, who's the guy? Sean Berger. He likes to get one percent is what I hear, and the other six percent, you can pretty much do anything you want with it. It, it's supposed to go into promotion of the city and, and businesses in the city, at least half of it. And then I think the other half, you can do whatever you want, but somebody.
That's a good Steve Baller question, I would say.
Yeah, I think so too. I'm, I mean, I'm just, I'm just, that's just what I'm hearing from, you know, Corvoo and, and the other cities that, that they get it. I know when we collect it or it's, or it's taken out, we have a fund and, and we give it to them on a regular basis. And what, what happens to it from there, I'm not really sure.
What's your understanding of that, Steve?
Yeah, so I need to pull up the ballot language to read it. Because I don't want to just.
It was in one of your recent reports, and I'm guessing you could find that and send it to people.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I'd be very happy to.
Rather than searching for it now.
Thanks.
Yep, you bet.
Good idea.
The other thing too, Louise, if you get, if anybody gets in real dire straits and they've got to have equipment. I mean, we still have a lot of SkyTrax and excavators and everything right on site there. If somebody needs a tree moved or something like that, if you get, if you get desperate. We're, we're kind of in that business right now for, for a short while at least, so.
Thank you, Jim. You've been most generous with helping us. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks again. We'll go on to legal report. I'm going to just turn it over to you, Steve.
Thank you. So I've submitted my, my report before the meeting was postponed. First thing, I, it's, it's my item number three, and I, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but I do want to answer any questions. But there was, there's been some changes in the state law regarding the city's ability to regulate or prohibit people from carrying weapons on city property. And we had previously, based on the existing state law back in 2011, said that we, we adopted a policy that you couldn't bring a weapon onto city property. And, and the current law, state law says if you have that kind of a policy, you have to have somebody on staff to, to provide security and search people and that kind of thing. And it makes it clear that if a city just says, well, you just can't have a, can't bring a weapon on our property, that the, somebody could sue the city, recover lawyer fees, any other damages and stuff. So it's my recommendation that the council adopt Resolution 2021 that rescinds the prior policy so that we're not inviting lawsuits that, that have been authorized by the legislature as of this year.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Casey. Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, Bobby has his hand up. Okay, discussion.
Yeah.
I don't know why we can't hear him.
Lost it, Casey.
We couldn't hear you, Casey. And, and you're not on mute. I don't know what happened.
No, I, I don't see any alternative but to follow Steve's advice on this, but I sure don't like it.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Scott.
Hi.
Wales.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
Sullivan absent, carried.
Thank you. Steve, did you have anything else?
The only other thing that I wanted to mention, it's not on your agenda tonight, but somewhat consistent with the theme of this resolution just adopted. You've heard me talk various times about the Iowa Legislature's efforts to restrict or prohibit city and county governments from regulating.
Airbnb.
Yeah, certain, certain, you know, rental issues. And the most recent one this year is just what Louise, Mayor Fromm, just said. It's Airbnb short-term rentals. We, we currently do prohibit those in a, maybe a couple of different ways. And the legislature has clearly said you can't do that. And so I'll be bringing an ordinance to you in September for your consideration. Again, just to bring our ordinances in line with the state law.
Any questions for Steve? Okay, we'll move to city clerk report. And Mike, you sent around the report.
Right, I updated the report this, this week to reflect the additional rental permits we've received. Chris Anderson ended up sending out to all the landlords on August 3rd links to an online form for both the rental permit and the disclosure. What I sent you was the results from that. I, we're pretty happy with what we've gotten so far. Sitting here in the office tonight, I see there's another thirteen checks that are coming in that are just mailed in rather than paying online too. I think that for a first time through an online system, we're doing pretty well. Not surprisingly, last week, there was not a whole lot of response from people. It's, it's picking back up again. So considering forms are due September 30th, and we will start collecting late penalty, I believe it's forty-five days after that. We're, we're doing okay. We'll send some gentle reminders to get some people to turn in their permit forms and everything else, but we're, we're pleased with where it's been going so far.
I have Brian here too. Brian Jensen's here. If there's any questions or, yeah, hi, Brian. You're, you're on mute if you want to say anything, but Brian's here if there's any questions for him about, you know, anything to clarify the rental permits or anything like that. Brian, do you want to just tell the council what you've been working on? That might be, you've been working on a lot of things. Would you review some of them?
I just been kind of, you know, we're on a three-year cycle as far as for the permits go. I've gone through quite a few this year, kind of starting with Grandview and kind of, kind of circling around a little bit. I mean, overall, the inspections have been great. Really no, really no issue with a lot of things. I've heard a couple of feedback with, you know, Mike and Chris as far as with the, with the new, with the new permits. And it seems like things are going fly, you know, fine. Of course, the first year is always a kind of a trial and error, which we're also implementing a similar system in Iowa City, and we're having the same experience there as well. I mean, overall, things are looking good. We're getting radon results, and still a lot of houses that I've been in do have radon currently. So we're just kind of chugging along and really, really no issues from anybody.
Brian, have the landlords, do they like this system better? Or have you gotten any feedback from the landlords?
I'm going to be honest, it's kind of mixed. A lot of the landlords, they're used to the old system, we're kind of used to it. A lot of the other landlords that are more kind of computer savvy or like to do things online, they like it a lot. So it, it's going to be mixed, but I think it's a transition that, I mean, needed to be done, especially to help out, you know, Chris and, you know, Mike, if he's going to help out in the future too.
Thanks.
They do more of, they do more of the paperwork end of things than, than I do. I, I kind of keep track of a, I do a paper inspection sheet that I keep track of, but they keep track of the actual permit itself.
I, I would totally agree with what Brian said. Just having, you know, having, having been on council, what, what happened before this year? Everyone submitted a paper permit renewal, and Chris would have to take all that information from paper and hand enter it into her spreadsheet that you get as the rental database. So moving to an online form, we have moved all of that and entry away. So that's, that alone is, is worth, I think, going to it. And I agree that there are landlords who think this is much easier. There are landlords that are a little confused because it's the first time, but I, I, I think people are going to be pretty happy with it going forward.
And the comments have been online versus on paper. Has anybody said anything about the actual complexity of the building, of the rental permits?
Um, it's.
A lot, it's a lot simpler, simpler than it was in, in years past. I wonder if the landlords have any feelings about that.
Yeah.
I think, go ahead, Brian.
I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, Chris is the one who, who all the landlords are used to calling and talking to. So I think she's heard that more than anybody else. And she said, many people have said this is a much simpler form, regardless of whether you're doing the PDF or the online. So yes, I, I think that has been a good positive this year.
Okay. Yeah, and I've, I talked to Chris a little bit this afternoon about it. And, you know, it's, it's a transition that needed to take place, and it's going to be a learning curve for some people. But overall, I, I kind of played around with her test version a little bit when Mike sent it to me. And honestly, it's, it's a pretty nice version, really is. Both Chris and Mike did a great job with that.
Thanks, Mike and Brian.
I do want to say, Chris asked me the other day and said, it's been so helpful working with Mike and Brian. And it's really given her some time to rest and things since she's had this first surgery of carpal tunnel. And, you know, that was put on hold because of the COVID. And now the second one, her surgery center didn't have power. And so that had to be canceled. I told her, you can't have any more surgeries because disasters happen. And she agreed. And so her second surgery is scheduled August 25th now. And, and it's just great to have Mike around to help. She's expressed that and wanted me to tell the council.
He's helping me also, and I appreciate having him too. Mike put the agenda together. Thank you, Mike.
Welcome. You're welcome.
Okay, so anything else for the clerk's report? Okay, I think we're good here. Now, I see Lori is here, and we have the payment of the bills. And Lori sent the warrants, I think it was yesterday. I don't know, all these days run together. And then she added a few more today, I think, or so. Did you want to say anything, Lori? Did everybody get to see the second set that she sent? It included black squirrel and some other.
I don't have anything.
Visabell and things. Okay, is there any objection to pay in the bills? Hearing none, the bills will be paid by unanimous consent. Then we'll go on to police chief report. Troy, you had quite a report, and I'm glad you put the farmer's market in there so I didn't have to say anything. That's been going super well, more popular than ever since, you know, it's COVID time and people can get out and get some things. Go ahead. Troy, thank you.
I think Rose and Louise, I don't have anything to add other than what's in the report. I can review it if you'd like, but it, this one happens to be planetary. There are a lot of things that are either directly related to our racial, and our anti-racial ordinance or along that same theme, but we continue to make progress, and that continues to gain momentum both in other communities in the county and across most of those.
Are there any questions for Troy? He had a lot of good meetings this month and things, that, thank you. Okay, and Sarah sent her written report too. And so then we'll go to streets and sidewalks, and we'll start with Josiah. I see Josiah's here, and he sent a written report.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Can everybody hear me fine?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I'll start with our resolution number 2022 that we have on the agenda. Resolution accepting the quotation for the 2020 pavement marking project. I addressed this in my report. We received a quote from L.L. Pelling for the, for the painting this year. The amount was eight thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. As I noted in my report, that's about two-thirds of our budgeted amount for this fiscal year. And the reason, if you recall, is we wanted to set aside some money to be able to do a second round in the spring. Because some, some of the pavement markings obviously get worn down more quickly than others. So this, this facilitates that plan. And the other thing I noticed is that they did start the work Sunday night, overnight. And the reason was they had that sort of planned ahead with the work they were doing at the university. And so it was important to get that started before, before the students get back in town in full swing. Are there any questions about the quote or the resolution?
Okay, so the Resolution 2022 is before you authorizing, as Josiah said, quotation for the 2020 pavement markings. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Lisa, second.
I'll second it.
Second by Doug. Discussion. Roll call vote.
Wales.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Oh, Sullivan absent, motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, Josiah.
So I'll, I'll just touch base on a couple of items from our report. So Olive Court, the contractor met their substantial completion date of August 7th to have the road and sidewalks open. We did submit them a punch list of things to get done in the next month before their final completion date, which was specified as September 11th. They've been working on some of those things. I think the big thing we're trying to nail down now is when they're going to get the sodding installed. And I don't have a final answer, although I did hear from this, from the landscaper that they are ready to go next week as long as the general contractor gets the grading prepared for them.
Right.
That, they, they told me that's what their plan was at the end of last week. So that's, that's the best information we have at the moment.
It looked good. That Olive Court looks fabulous, even without landscaping.
I think I noted in there that, that they are planning to sod first and then plant trees probably in September, so those will come later.
And then they're going to do a watering too, like they've done before?
Yeah, they're responsible to do watering for the sod and the trees for the first, first month.
There's a point I'd like to raise, Josiah. Louise and I had a discussion about sidewalk repair. And I was walking around University Heights, and I noticed most of the heating on the sidewalk is from the tree roots that are planted in the parkways. And I know how much University Heights loves its trees, and I do too. But I wondered what kind of trees they're going to put in there? And if we're going to have more problems with our roots and heeding sidewalks ten years down the line? Or are they planning on putting a different kind of tree that doesn't cause us that problem?
Yeah, that's a good point, and I, I don't disagree with you. So what we've got for trees to go in are trees that are recommended in the statewide design standards for street trees. So these, these are not going to be the large, you know, thirty-six or forty-eight inch diameter sugar maples, things like that. These will be smaller trees, smaller trunk sizes with smaller roots. That being said, I, I can't guarantee that, you know, there won't be an issue in ten years. But yeah, the trees were selected from a list of trees that were more. But, um, yeah, the trees were selected from a list of trees that were more, um, appropriate for a street setting.
Thank you.
Uh, the other, the other items from our report, I'll hit on, uh, street repairs. The Olive Court contractor and their paver, All American, are planning to do the, um, extra panel replacements that we've talked about, um, both on Melrose at the, at the curve there by the, by Paul Moore's vacant lot, as well as replace some panels on Kosher. It's at its west intersection with Highland Drive. Uh, the other thing I noted in there, I just want to reiterate, um, we've had a couple of items with Iowa City Streets that they've been helpful with. One is the project they did to replace, um, bad panels at the West City Limit over by Thinkbine. As I noted, there was, there was a stretch of bad panels and, and the cracks and things in those panels didn't really, they didn't respect the city boundary, so to speak. They went straight through it. And, uh, so they offered to replace several of those panels into University Heights for just the cost of the material. So we went ahead and approved that with them. And the other thing they did was, uh, they've helped us out a couple of times with the traffic signal at Sunset and Melrose, uh, getting, trying to get the, uh, detection system back online, which I think was windstorm related. The last item there is the, uh, the Gulfview Drive, uh, parking area improvements. Uh, we do have the topo completed and, um, now we're ready to move in and, and prepare a preliminary plan layout, for you guys to take a look at. The schedule for that is to bid the work still this winter for construction starting next year.
I, I got a question about that. Wrote Roseanne, I think her name is Roseanne Hopkins. She's got the house right in the corner of, I believe it's Grand Avenue and Gulfview. And there was a big stake in her yard and I didn't think the project went that far. I, I wasn't sure what the, the point, what the, the reason for the stake was other than, you know, maybe to survey. But can you tell me what that, that, you, you know what I'm talking about where that stake was?
I, I don't, but I, I can't tell you. The, the project's not intended to go up into their yard. So I can, I can take a look at that stake. It may have just been, like you said, a survey marker, uh, to get them oriented.
They'd be a little disconcerted not knowing what the hell it was for. So that's what I thought, that's what I thought, Josiah. Thank you.
I'll take a look at it and if we don't need it anymore, we'll, we'll get rid of it.
All right.
Is there probably a property pin or something buried next to it?
You know, I don't, I don't know, Doug. Josiah might.
Yeah, I'm not sure. It may, it might be, or it might just be a control point, like I said, for the survey equipment to get oriented in, in the world.
Josiah, I think the only other question I have for you is, you know, in light of the storm, when are we going to bury the overhead lines?
Well, we're going to do some on Melrose here in a couple of years.
I like it.
We, we've, uh, looked into it in the past. And, uh, but I thought maybe, and that you're not the first to ask that. I thought maybe after the storm dies down a little, I talk to Mid-American and maybe have them talk to the council about it. About some options.
Well, I was, I was mostly joking, but yeah, if that would be, I mean, obviously. Yeah, it'd be phenomenal aesthetically. It's, 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 it's great. But just when storms like this run through, that'd be even, even better.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we'd all like it to be that way, but, uh, it, it's very expensive, which is always the issue.
Of the, uh, $750,000 that we're paying for the beautification of Melrose, about how much of that is to bury the utility lines, would you say, Josiah?
You know, I, I don't recall.
Not, not sure even a ballpark of that half of it or a third of it or anything like that?
Yeah. I, I have that information here, so I, I'll get back to you here in a few minutes, like.
Well, we've got a
I have the application and we broke it down into the, all those components. I just, I just don't remember what that was.
Okay, and that can wait until you and I get together at, uh, Sidekick Cafe to talk about this, uh, capital improvements budget.
Okay.
And now Doug, thank goodness she didn't go out and survey all the properties, uh, with the trees yet, Doug, because I think they've blown away. But Doug, did you want to report about, I mean, I think we're, you were, you and volunteer Pat Yegi were going to go around and
Yep.
Do the trees.
Met with Pat Yegi here. I met with Pat Yegi, I don't know if it was last Sunday or Sunday before, I think it was. And we were, actually it was before the storm. And, uh, we're kind of coming up with a, a game plan of where to, where to start with that. And I'd already started surveying, you know, just on my way to work and then on the way home, I'd take a note of what needs to be identified. I've talked to a couple of our police officers while they're on bike and notice if there's any stop signs that look like they might be blocking, you know, to kind of denote that and get back to me. And they, they were tickled to death off of that. So I'm trying to get as many eyes out there as I can and, and ask any citizens if they also know of anything that might impede traffic signs or, you know, people that are on blocks that noticed that, you know, they hang down. So we're, we're trying to get the, the hot ones first and then we'll kind of come back and, and, uh, kind of clean up the whole city.
Any questions for Doug? Okay, we'll go on to Yes.
It'd be a good time, be a good time to get it cut now so we can throw it on the pile with everything else, you know?
Oh, you're Yeah, that would be.
You are looking at sidewalks also, right? Not just trees.
No, yeah, no. Bushes, anything that we got, there's eight feet above sidewalks and 13 over the streets. So anything I can find and, and you got room in your backyard for a pile if you start one, right?
Just look at my right of way.
Okay, we'll go down to finance. Bobby, did you have anything?
No, there's nothing major. Uh, I spoke with Casey a little bit, but, um, I'm going to, uh, Lori's going to, uh, give me a monthly P and L report. It's just a year to date, um, but I'm going to break it down into a monthly year date. So, you know, let's say we're six twelfths of the way through or, or five twelfths of the way through. I'll just take the, um, the annual amount and multiply it by five twelfths and then compare that to where we're at for the month. And then, um, it'll, it'll just give us a different way to look at it. So, you know, if anyone wants that.
Mike, Mike have that report now, Bobby, that he could put it on the screen for us?
Uh, I, I don't, no, I didn't send it to Mike unless you did.
Was that your updated report, Casey, that you had sent?
No, that was, uh, Bobby's updated report.
I can, I'm happy to send it if you'd like.
I think, actually Bobby, I can probably share the screen with you.
I mean, look, look to me, i- i- if I understood that, uh, the, uh, budget that you did, Bobby, if it, if the, if it was 100% on the far right category, it means that we had spent what we budgeted and that differences might, uh, have to do with timing, that kind of thing. And that there was a couple of them that we have already spent 555% of the, uh, budget. And I, and I, I just did have some questions about, uh, about that. I mean, if, you know, I want to be able to approve our, uh, uh, the figures that we've got from Lori. And I, I don't want us to be, you know, overspending unless there's a good, good reason for it. Uh, did you recognize any of those other, uh, uh, factors where, where we spent the bulk of our money? You know, other than say painting streets, uh, which Josiah explained? Was there, uh, uh, other instances of that? Where we spent a whole lot less than 100% or a whole lot more than 100%?
Well, I think there's, I think there's quite a few that are over or under 100%. But like you said, most of it's, I'm just making sure I'm unmuted. Yeah, most of it's due to timing. And, you know, for the most part, the only, the only, um, expenses that we have that will be predictable monthly are going to be like payroll, you know, the, the, the staff, personnel, that type of thing. That's a consistent.
Did you see anything in that financial report that we should be alarmed about?
No. Nothing, no, nothing that I saw was
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Bobby, I temporarily made you host and I should have hit co-host instead.
Oh, let me see here.
But if you look next to your name, you should be able to click on University Heights.
Am I on the participant list?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
And make me the co-host or make me host again.
There you are.
Thank you. And Troy had raised his hand, but I think that might be because he's Okay.
Okay, we're good. So we'll go on. Finance, we got, uh, Casey, Building, Zoning and Sanitation. And you did an updated report recently too?
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of moving parts to it. What I tried to do is, um, convert the, uh, comprehensive plan to something that we could actually develop a budget around and thus make it actionable steps. And that's what I talked about in the first paragraph of that report. It's about a three-page report and there are two tables. So it's, it's fairly complex. And, um, uh, I think you've all got a copy of it. And if not, Mike, is that something, uh, you can put on the screen?
Uh, give me just a second and I can pull that up.
Great, thanks very much. And I guess what I'd like to see on the screen is that first table that sets our priorities A and B and then, uh, not a priority. So while Mike's getting ready, I'll talk about this a little bit. We looked at, uh, and the reason I, I took it from the comprehensive plan and there was a couple of exceptions. For the most part, all those, oh, no, if you could do the, uh, other table, the table before that, Mike. Okay, those are estimated costs. Those are, um, uh, the table before that is to develop priorities, to, to decide which, uh, which things we should do first and which things we should do when. And, and I, I assign various criteria to these projects. So for example, if we don't control the project, uh, like in the, in the instance of Emerald Court, we don't own that right of way. And while the, the comprehensive plan said they want a 10-foot wide sidewalk on Emerald Court, but since we don't own the right of way, there's a, uh, we're pretty limited in what we can do. And so I said, if we control the project, we get 50 points. If we can't control the project, we get zero points. And other criteria are like child safety. I think I, uh, assigned that 30 points. And, um, and by that, I mean, if it's a, a, a blind bend in the road and there's no sidewalk, then I think that, uh, child safety isn't at an issue there. Or if you're, uh, it's a direct, um, uh, walkway to Horn School, that has to do with child safety. Obviously, one of the things that's most important is what kind of condition it's in. And, um, I, I use the comprehensive plan for that. They, they told me what, um, what streets they thought were in very poor conditions, what were in poor conditions, and they did the same thing with sidewalks. Another criteria was whether or not it was in the older part of town. And the, the infrastructure there is, um, uh, much more derelict than, uh, uh, west of Sunset. That we have, you know, things that were, were already scheduled to do. And, um, the, uh, Melrose beautification, which I, I didn't understand until I heard the conversation about burying the utility lines. That makes a little more sense to me. It didn't, it didn't really meet many of the criteria. It scored 110 points and you had to get at least 120. So it's pretty close. But that's a, that's a point that apparently the community has decided on. And whether or not there's going to be political opposition, um, to it, uh, yeah, yeah, whether or not there's going to be political opposition to it, that's it. Thanks, Mike. Uh, that, that was also assigned 20 points. And that's a little hard to say, you know? I've talked to a lot of people along these things. And, um, sometimes I'm getting support, sometimes I'm not. There's a kind of a mixed bag depending on how close you are to a particular improvement. If it's on, if it's on your yard, a sidewalk on your yard, chances are that, uh, the people whose yard it's on is not going to, uh, support it because sidewalks, uh, require maintenance, they require snow removal and they, uh, limit the use of your property. So, so, uh, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a difficult thing, but I thought it was important to, uh, include that. And so you'll see that Emerald Street doesn't make it because it doesn't have, we don't have control. Mahask, Monroe and Ridgeview, uh, none of those, uh, score high enough. They're not in an older part of town. They don't necessarily complete a, a loop. And by that, I mean, the sidewalk ends in grass, like, uh, on Mari- Marietta, just, uh, east of Sunset. Uh, there's about 100 feet there that, um, it's kind of a slight hill there and the sidewalk doesn't go through there. And the reason I think the comprehensive plan wanted that finished is because if you finish a loop, uh, you get, you get more, more functional utility for not much more money. So I think they're, they're trying to be, uh, efficient that way. Lima Court, surprising to me, um, uh, they have a, a, a sidewalk in Iowa City, but obviously there's no sidewalk in University Heights. The fact that it's in the older neighborhood is important. And the fact that there's no sidewalk there now gave it, uh, 30 points as far as condition goes. Because obviously, if there's no sidewalk, it's not in very good condition. So the, the costs were figured based on, um, what Olive Court costs. And I see this as, uh, um, a little bit, a little bit high or quite a bit high. But I want to be conservative, uh, on it. And, and I'm going to be talking to Josiah later on this week. And we'll try to refine that a little bit. But there, uh, the estimates are all consistent. And if it's high for one, it's high for them all. But those, those costs, and we can move to the second, uh, grid, Mike. Okay, so the cost of, uh, of Olive Court was $641, um, per lineal foot. And that was kind of on, I think, kind of on the high side because we had all the impervious pavers and, um, about, I don't know, six or eight feet of rock. And I don't think that'll be necessary for, um, uh, Kosher east of Sunset, for example. But I said that it would cost us a similar amount because, you know, I don't, I don't know what costs are going to be exactly, but that's a pretty good, um, simulacrum, if I can use that word. Example or model of how it would be. Um, and sidewalks, they, you can leave that, yeah. The sidewalks varied a little bit from 50 to 75. It depends on how wide and how much cut and fill there's going to be. So I, I added a little bit more to the Swisher track. The, um, the distances are all figured based on the, uh, assessor's records. And that gave me a, a total cost. And then I used, uh, I looked at the total cost and And then I used, I, I looked at the total cost and the budget that we have this year was $240,000. I initially tried to keep it at about $240,000. And I think you can go to, to the bottom of that sheet, Mike. Yeah, if you can push that up. That, perfect. So that, but when I, when I got into the Melrose Beautification, that's in 2022 and 2023. And we have $750,000, so it kind of changed the $240,000 pretty quickly. We've got revenues coming in. I estimated hotel motel taxes of $240,000 based on 140 units, 54% occupied. And we get 7% of the receipts, which I estimated $125 a piece. We will get the assessed value from the hotel, but it won't come in until 18 months after January 1st of, of 2021. So it'll be a while before these receipts come in. I didn't include One University Place because it comes in incrementally, it increases a little bit. But I don't expect that we'll see that by 2028 and this budget ends in 2027. So that's, that's basically how I rank these things. Obviously, if, if anybody feels that you know, the condition of the street should have more points or the child safety should have more points, they're, they're certainly welcome to weigh in on that. Because, you know, those, those numbers are just, they're based basically on what the comprehensive plan said in terms of emphasis and what we've been emphasizing. So I think we've got the pretty good basis of the five-year budget for Bobby. And I'm going to do one more revision on this thing after I have a chance to talk to Josiah about. Does everybody, does anybody have any questions about this or is this just like?
No, I think you did a great job, Casey. This is, I mean, this was, I mean, this is a big, big task, I guess, just to kind of take in what's on the comprehensive plan, in my mind at least, taking that and putting, you know, putting, putting some legs to it or whatever, but I feel good. Just, did you connect with Josiah on the price per, you know, what unit price on each one of these? Or that kind of just what you use for the?
Yeah, I, I took his numbers right off the quote for Olive Court, the low, the low bid, basically. And, and that's what we want to talk about, Bobby, to, to refine it a little bit further.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, that's good. Well, great job. This will certainly be helpful in, from my standpoint in terms of putting, you know, numbers to it. Once we find out if it's, if it's in the ballpark, if it's close, which I think it probably is in the ballpark anyway.
Well, thanks, thanks much for that. I, I did put in a bit of a plug there. That, you know, one of the things that struck me was that 40% of University Heights people commute either by bicycles or by walking. And I, I'm thinking that, you know how Wayne Gretzky says, it's, it's not where the puck is, it's where the puck is going to be, that's important. And I'm, I'm struck by the number of electrical scooters and electrical bicycles that I encounter in my walks. And I, and I think that we should be putting a little bit more emphasis on sidewalks than we have in the past. As part, you know, part of the bicycle plan and also I think we can get a lot of utility out of them.
What, Mike, can you switch back? Oh, I was just going to ask, just, Mike, could you switch back to the, the grading system that Casey put together, that rating system? And go ahead, Louise.
No, that's okay. I, it's about the 750. When you meet with Josiah for the Melrose Streetscape, see how that has to be paid. You know, we discussed that a little bit, Casey, the other day.
Yeah, and, and I think we.
Funding, when do we need the funding and how much? Which year?
I, I, I had that down for 22 and, I think 22 and 23 or 23 and 24, yeah, 22 and 23.
That's.
And I, I figured that anything under $240,000, we could pay for with the current budget because we managed to pull that off this year. But much over that, we'd have to go for bonding. And so there's two projects that require bonding. One is Highland Avenue. The other is Melrose Beautification. And we, you know, I split those, I split Highland over two years in the same way that we did Olive Court. And I did the same thing with, so when you see on that, that far right column, when you see 22, 23, or 26, 27, it's because I planned on paying for it from current revenues and I split it over two years. So this is, this is pretty much done without bonding, but I think we're going to have to bond for Melrose Beautification and for Highland Avenue. One thing I, I, I'd like to point out is as far as a Melrose Beautification, and it really helps me to be thinking about the burying the utility lines. But for the most part, you know, my, my wife said, well, it is pretty ugly, Casey. And of course, appraisers have no aesthetic appreciation whatsoever. We just care about money. But much of the stuff that's ugly are the modest quality investment houses that are along Melrose. And we can't control those. And so I wondered what all was involved in the beautification plan besides the burying the utilities and a few trees in the parkway. Because a million five sounds like an awful lot of money.
Well, that's, we need to have Josiah send that and everybody look at it and, you know, nobody's prepared. I mean, I haven't looked at it for probably a year.
That's fair.
And we have, I, we have a nice, big plan, you know, and there's, you know, places for bikes and, you know, it's lovely. But yeah, I don't know about discussing it tonight. I think we all, you know, this council especially needs to look at it, you know, look at the.
That's, that's fair enough. That satisfied me, Louise.
Yeah.
So I, I have some comments. I don't necessarily want these answered right now, but just comments. For example, when you talk about repairing Cozer, what we had talked about previously with the last council was when you do that street repair, you do the, the sidewalks because replacing the panels and doing these little mishmash repairs isn't working. Are you including that idea in with this?
You know.
Not just the street, but the sidewalks?
Yeah, what, what struck me about Cozer, and I, I look, I've looked pretty hard at those sidewalks. And what, what it really needs, there's been so many overlays and there's no curbing in there. And so I can, I was concerned about the drainage problems in the street, more so than the two sidewalks. But if you feel the sidewalks are in need of rehabilitation, we can include that.
Well, that's something Josiah and I can do. You know, it's kind of falls in my lap, so I'd be glad to work with Josiah and take a good look at that and get any evaluation of what we should be prioritizing.
That'd be great, Doug.
And then I have one more question about your written, this written part. You say with regard to repair, the city has agreed that it will pay for new sidewalks where five or more panels are at issue.
Yeah, that was my understanding. Is that wrong, Lisa?
I'm throwing it out there for someone like Louise or Josiah or Steve. I'm not aware of that. My neighbor who had 10 panels marked, I don't think was aware of that. So, yeah, I just was wondering.
Well, I'm curious about the answer to that myself.
Okay.
Does anybody have any feedback, Louise or Josiah or Steve?
This is Josiah. I, I'm not aware of that being a standard.
Great.
I don't know, I don't know of anything either.
Just wanted to make sure I hadn't missed some.
Was, was, did I miss something, Louise? I think that's what, what I, my understanding was from our conversation, but obviously I'm, I'm dead wrong on that.
Oh, I don't remember discussing that. I must have been discussing something else and we got mixed up.
Did the city agree to pay for any sidewalk panels? At all?
Well, what, what happened in a previous council is that they decided not to have the citizens, the residents, do a sidewalk repair. And that the city was going to look into doing a sidewalk repair.
So they were.
The city. So that hasn't been decided. And Josiah was researching how much sidewalk panels cost. And you can get a better, you know, a better buy when you do it as, as a group.
So the, the, the deal was that the individual citizens were still going to pay for it. It was just who was going to repair it.
No. No, my understa, yeah. Lisa, you want to explain it?
I think maybe two of us on the previous council had sidewalks and I got a letter, so I was sort of talking about this. We have residents who pay to fix the sidewalks over and over. And, and as you can see, not, not everyone in town has sidewalks. And I just thought, and others on the council thought that was somewhat unfair. We should find a different way to repair. The other part of that conversation was, I can replace the panels that you marked, but it doesn't really fix all the issues with the sidewalk. And I think Josiah, you and the council member at the time, and I met, was it Dottie and I met and just talked about this, that that replacing long stretches of sidewalk would, especially in the old part of town, would work better than replacing this panel and then next time that panel. It doesn't fix the overall problem, so. That's what I can tell you. I don't want to take up a whole lot of time talking about it. We could talk about it some other time, so.
No, I, I appreciate that, Lisa.
Okay.
And I think doing it with the street is a good idea because the, the sidewalks are higher than the street. So something needs to be, I mean, Josiah's taught me that over the years. And, and you know what I mean? That has to be worked in together for for water drainage and things like that. I think it's a good idea to do it together. But when you meet with Josiah, he'll explain it.
Okay.
Doug, were you planning to meet? With, with, as part of that, as streets and sidewalks, or I mean, how is this going to be?
Yeah, that's it. And I need to work with Josiah here now that we've got the Olive Court kind of put away. So I guess we need to look to see what's on deck next. And see what's the appropriate biggest bang for the buck, I guess you could say.
That's what, that's what this is, Doug. We're trying to figure out where we're getting the biggest bang for the buck. And, and, you know, that's why I've got all this criteria and stuff. But what I'd like to do is I'd like to have you join me and Josiah when we meet. You know, to talk, to talk about these things, so we're all on the same page. And I know you work. So that might be, pardon me?
We all can't be as lucky as you, Casey.
Well, you know, I, I say that, but I spend about three hours a day on therapy every morning, so I'm usually available in the afternoons.
I don't mean lucky like that. That's not lucky.
Yeah, I, I got my own little, more work to do, I guess I'd say. But we were hoping to meet some, some afternoon this week. And we can mess around with that by email or something, try to get a date that we're all satisfied. But I'd like to get this capital improvements budget squared away like this week so that I can give it to Bobby and he can work on the budget from there.
I like what you've done, Casey. I mean, just at a high level, do we control it? Yes or no? Is it highly trafficked? Yes or no? Is it a safety issue? Yes or no? You know, older neighborhood, basically, does it need more repair? Yes or no? You know, are citizens in favor of it? I think it's a great system. I don't know. You know, if the rest of you guys agree, but it seems to me like a pretty good way to prioritize kind of what we need to do. I don't know. Doug, I mean, Josiah maybe has a.
Like Josiah probably works more with the contractors directly, but, you know, I know, I have plenty of friends that are in the concrete business that would love to maybe tag along and give us an estimate. You know, not a quote, but an estimate of, you know, what, what we're looking at. So at least we have a, a very accurate number for Casey to put down on the spreadsheet. Because, you know, we can, you could say 50,000 or 100,000 and, you know, there's a big difference between those two numbers. So if we had a contractor that would be willing to, you know, even itching to get a foot in the door of the city and just says, hey, you know, I can come along and just throw out a rough idea. You're looking at so many dollars per square foot. And while we're here to do the street, we could do the sidewalk for, you know, a half of what you would do if it were just the sidewalk. So a lot of times if you talk to a contractor and, and this time of year, getting ready for winter, sometimes they're running out of work and they're getting hungry and we could probably get a sweeter deal if we had a contractor walk with us after we identified, you know, what we think we need. And then we could grab a contractor some other time too and walk him through and give us some numbers, just, just rough numbers. But at least they'd be fairly accurate because, you know, somebody that does it every day is going to be way more accurate than all of us put together.
That's true.
Great job, Casey.
Thanks, Bobby.
Casey, do you have, so you have a plan to, to meet with, with the three of them and also have Josiah get out the Melrose Streetscape project and send that?
Yes.
And, yeah, that's good. I just want to review what, what we need to see. And there seemed like there was something else, but I think Josiah knows, but. Okay, yeah, this is great.
If you want to call me anytime, Casey, and talk sidewalks, feel free.
Okay, thanks, Lisa.
I can give you the perspective from last time.
Good.
Okay, Casey, I know you said this and I'm, and I mean, we, I'm going to just say that I did talk to my Amish lady from Kelowna and she was, we talked, Casey and I talked about maybe the Amish would want some of the wood in University Heights. And she said, I gave her my, I gave her a made-up card with my phone number on it. And she was going to put it in some kind of handout paper, something like that, where people could contact me if they were interested. She didn't know if that anybody would be interested or not for the wood.
I made a, I made a call on that, excuse me. I made a call on that also, Louise, and I didn't hear back from my contact yet, so I don't know what's going on. So, you know. Thank you very much.
And then the other thing was whether we wanted Derek to put any chips in the north Sunset. And I didn't know if Mike wanted to weigh in on that. I mean, or did he talk about it a little bit already? You know what I mean? Do we want any more chips?
Well, I, what my thought was that, that they could pile them there and they wouldn't have to transport them very far. And we could maybe save a little bit of money on that black squirrel contract. And we could also use the chips for a temporary surfacing of that area.
I think we need to look into it because remember, sometimes we put things there and then we have a problem and then we have to figure out how to move it.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I think we need a, a little bit more direction.
Well, let's, what does Mike Andrew say about it? Because he did that fabulous wood chips on Prospect Street there.
That, that was, I was, I was only tangentially involved in that. That was, that was Dan of Virginia Miller who did most of the really heavy work on that. It would be possible, you know, the way. Um, it would be possible, you know, the way we've laid the trails out, there's a loop up on the Sunset end that's kind of flat. And then it connects through over to the Glen, Glencrest side by going down and back up again. You could put a pile near the end of the paving at North Sunset. And, and we could wheelbarrow it out to the trail, which is what we did on Glencrest.
And, and I'm not thinking about the, the part of the trail that gets really steep.
No, no.
We're talking about, I mean, it's still like 600 feet or something.
Right. That's the, the, North Sunset's about a tenth of a mile loop. And it's, it's relatively flat. Um, but yeah, we could put some chips there and we could, we could, we could wheelbarrow them out. And the, the trail is, I was surprised how, and Lisa commented too, how well it really has, it's still really well marked in terms of people, people have walked on it. So yeah, putting some chips down. If we have a great big supply would, could be a good thing.
Okay, uh, I'll kind of have him check with you too, Mike, in the area, you know? Because he's got a lot of work to do. The, we can do chips later on, you know, there's a lot out there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Plenty of time. We still have really big logs in our backyard yet from him too. So, you know, I'll see him.
And by the way, I talked to Jan, Jan Leff and Mr. Stebbins, who both have houses right there on North Sunset, as you know. And, uh, they were both in favor of, uh, improving that trail. And I was kind of surprised to hear that.
Thanks for sharing that. Um, is there any other questions for Casey? Because we'll go down to, uh, I don't hear any. I will go to eGovernment and Lisa sent a a nice report with pictures. Always like pictures. Uh, Lisa, did you want to say anything specifically?
Just thanks again, Mike, for putting the agenda and the attachments together. I'm, I'm liking that a lot.
Okay, great.
Felt like, felt like old times, Lisa.
We're having nightmares.
Are there any, uh, announcements? Uh, I think Lisa's doing a good job putting them and marking them so well on the website. So always check the website. And, uh, is there any, uh, objection?
I think Steve, Steve has, Steve has an announcement.
He does?
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, uh, thanks, uh, Louise. See, I just wanted to mention, there is a, uh, University Heights Board of Adjustment meeting, uh, tomorrow evening by Zoom at seven o'clock. Uh, I just wanted to do it and all that. So, anyway. That's all.
Agenda and the attachments are on the website.
I didn't do those.
Okay.
I know.
It, is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
You.
See you in three weeks.